It is six PM on Monday, March seventeenth. I'm going to first call to order the Liquor Control Board meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Thomas Renner.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jenny will join us. We have two items on the agenda?
Yes.
Good evening. So, not conditional. These are ready to go. Have had the inspections and payment. And these are renewals. Excellent. Feveridge Warehouse and RL Valley. Any questions from council? Okay, and no attendees, so. Hearing no concern. Do I have a motion? Oops. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny. That is the end of our Liquor Control Board agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn that meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That meeting is adjourned. Six oh one PM, I will call to order the City Council meeting. Agenda review is up first. So, I've been informed that the city attorney is on a timeline at this evening. And we want him present for the executive session that was warned. I would propose moving items eight and nine ahead of our regular items. So it would be our first action before getting into the rest of the agenda, so that we can have him join us. Any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. Oops. Moving on to public comment. Again, no members of the public present. Alright, consent agenda. So we have a number of items on for approval. We have our minutes from February eighteenth. The accounts payable warrants for March. Payroll warrants for February. Subsequent payout for December. The FY twenty-five audit contract award. The certified local government agreement. The new public rights of way consideration and naming. Winuski Armory redevelopment project requests for congressionally-directed spending. Winuski Police Department renovation project request for congressionally-directed spending. Self-contained breathing apparatus financing. The city manager's evaluation summary. And a resolution for recognizing March as Women's History and Gender Equality Month. Francophone Month. And a resolution recognizing International Transgender Day of Visibility. Any concerns with any of the consent agenda items?
I have to abstain because of item I.
Okay, we'll separate that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I did provide comments ahead of time.
Were your answers sufficient or comments sufficiently responded to?
Mostly. There were... There was the Welch memo that I don't see in response to, so. I think it basically just making sure that applications are administratively complete.
Okay. Alright, so, well, I'll separate these out, so. Do I have a motion to approve items A through H and J, K, L, M, N?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And do I have a motion to approve item I?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Charlie, second by Aurora. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining?
Aye.
That motion is approved. Okay. We are on to council reports. Charlie, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, short, sweet. Firstly, I'd just like to thank the residents of Winuski for re-electing me to represent them here on City Council. I aim to serve you all well over the course of the next two years. I've learned a lot in the last two. And I'm looking forward to just continuing the process of service. Second order business, the Winuski Housing Commission is meeting tomorrow night at six PM here at City Hall. There's a Zoom option available online as well. Yeah, that's it so far.
Alright, thank you. Thomas?
Also, short, Safe, Healthy, Connected People wasn't able to meet at our last meeting, so we will be meeting tomorrow at five thirty in the O'Brien Community Center. Hope folks are able to attend. I was not able to attend the last downtown Winuski meeting due to some personal family issues, so I don't have an update from that committee.
Alright. Last week, our Finance Commission met, reviewed three items. Results of an exit poll conducted on Town Meeting Day to see where voters were... How voters are seeking information ahead of voting. I think they engaged about half of people that came through on the day. Two-thirds of them were seeking information ahead of time with the city's website and social media as top sources. So that was reaffirming that we are meeting, reaching a lot of folks. Many of those who did not seek out info ahead of time said either that they didn't feel compelled, as they trust city leadership, or they simply saw the amount being asked for and thought it was fair. The Commission also reviewed their section of the master plan and found that good progress was being made across goals and made some minor suggestions for the comprehensive update that will be happening starting later this year. The Commission was also introduced to the Small Business Loan Program to kick off their review as directed by council. It was just an introduction. The next meeting, April eighth, they will dig into evaluating program performance. The Planning Commission also met last week. They held a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Unified Land Use and Development Regulations for Transportation Demand Management. These amendments aim to require certain new developments to include transportation-related site amenities or provide transportation programs to employees or residents. Additionally, the amendments aim to reduce vehicle trips, improve traffic flow for all users, lower greenhouse gas emissions, and encourage city residents and employees to use transportation modes other than private vehicles. There were no public attendees at the hearing, and the Commission voted to advance the amendments to the City Council for consideration, so we'll see that at a future agenda. The next regular Planning Commission will be April tenth. I think a joint Planning and Housing meeting is scheduled for March twenty-seventh to continue the conversation around inclusionaryism. That is it for me.
Great. Infrastructure is not going to meet this month due to the lack of current discussion items or other topics needing approval, so. We will reconvene April seventeenth on our regular date and time at the pool. And we anticipate discussing the car charging planning grant at that April meeting. And then, just as a reminder, I'm sure the city manager will touch on this too. The Main Street revitalization work will be kicking back off next Monday. Very quickly. But that's it for me, aside from also thanking voters for re-electing me into third term. So, thank you.
Aurora?
Don't have a huge amount. I was unfortunately ill and I'm unable to attend the last IMB Commission meeting, however, doing some exploring and support with our chair of ways to connect with the Winuski School Anti-Racism Commission and how we might partner on civic engagement opportunities. March is not a month where IMB meets, but the ambassadors should be at what meetings are held this month in their roles as ambassadors, and we'll be back in April.
Excellent. Thank you all. We'll move on to the city updates. Elaine?
So, construction, yes, will resume soon. The contractor is expected to return to the project area during the week of March twenty-fourth, with work resuming by March thirty-first. Short-term closures, night work, detoured traffic, lane shifts and closures, side street closures, detour routes, and on-street parking restrictions are all expected. Flaggers, uniformed officers, and signs will redirect traffic at each work zone when, where necessary. Temporary interruptions to utilities and driveways are also expected. In late April, the project will resume the twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week lane closure on Main Street, restricting traffic to northbound only. Southbound traffic will be detoured onto Tugend Street and Weaver Street. This year, the project will finish replacing the water and sewer systems and installing stormwater pipes and underground utilities. Main Street will be reconstructed through excavation, curb installation, paving, and line striping. New sidewalks, street lining, signs, landscaping, and upgraded traffic signals will also be installed. Construction will take place primarily Monday to Friday, seven AM to seven PM from April through early winter. The project is expected to be completed by summer of 2026. To read the full announcement with details about construction starting back up, please visit winuski.vt.gov/mainstreet. That's one word. Residents, businesses, and visitors who travel through the area are encouraged to sign up for weekly updates and traffic alerts. Businesses on Main Street, to help the Main Street Outreach Team contact you about direct impacts, please fill out the form available on the project website. Again, that's winuski.vt.gov/mainstreet. In related news, businesses on Main Street, please keep an eye out for an announcement about a special marketing campaign in support of Winuski businesses on Main Street. Through a special grant, the city has partnered with London Middlebury, a marketing firm located right here in Winuski, to help encourage residents and visitors to support our businesses. If you haven't received an email, text, or WhatsApp notification about this, please send an email to info@winuskimainstreet.com. That's info@winuskimainstreet.com. Or call eight zero two six five five six four one zero and ask for me. That's Elaine. And finally, the Vermont Garden Network and Winuski Recreation and Parks are thrilled to announce the grand opening of the Landry Park Greenhouse on Saturday, March twenty-second. The event is free, family-friendly, and open to everyone. Participants will enjoy activities such as a heated greenhouse tour, seed swap and sharing table, sowing onions and spring greens, and block printing. There will be free food and refreshments.
Alright, thank you. So per our change during agenda review earlier, we're going to move to item number eight. Item eight A, we have warrant in executive session pursuant to State Statute Section three one three, which exempts from public inspection, pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party. I'm seeking a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding this matter would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the city risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses the matter in public.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a second motion, so we can move into executive session to discuss this matter under the provisions of Title I, Section three one three, A one A of the Vermont statutes, inviting our city manager and a city attorney. Do you want to join?
Yeah.
Yeah, city clerk. And our city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, so we are going to move into private session. We will discuss this topic and only this topic. Any action coming from the discussion will happen back here in the public meeting, and then we'll move back into our regular items agenda. Sounds good. We are done with item eight. Item nine, settlement agreement for assessment. I am seeking a motion to authorize city manager to execute the settlement agreement as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Charlie, second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we also need to authorize her to sign the agreement?
Is that not what I said?
You did two of one.
Okay, great.
Execute it. Yes, okay.
Blanket bird.
Great. Alright, so now we are back into item seven, regular items. And first up for discussion or approval is overview of the approach for the Comprehensive Plan Update, which Revy will be introducing.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks. So, Comprehensive Plan. We have a valid Comprehensive Plan right now, was approved in March twenty nineteen. Per State Statute, it expires in March twenty twenty-seven. So, I started thinking about re-adopting it and what we need to do and what we should do. It has, it has good bones, it has a good framework. It has an enhanced energy plan, but there has been some statutory changes since that we have to be aware of and put that in there along with a number of other items that CCRPC has identified in their initial review. The initial review was included in your packet. It's pretty lengthy. So, with, starting off with the name, I was thinking, why is, like, even before I came here, I was like, why is this called the Master Plan? It's very interesting. Typically, with municipal plans, in planning terms, we call them either long-range plans or comprehensive plans. So, but Master Plans are typically referring to a very niche, a very particular area, and it's much more detailed on the build-out of it. So it seemed a little uncharacteristic when I was reviewing it in my planner mind of like, a Master Plan that is actually speaking more broad strokes. So, it just made more sense to call it a Comprehensive Plan or Municipal Plan. So I figured Comprehensive Plan, cover all of our bases. With the Comprehensive Plan, the, it's necessary for our zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, for the orderly development of the city over time. It's also utilized for capital improvement planning. So, we need to have a valid Comprehensive Plan in order to make updates to the zoning and to the capital improvement plan. And so that's what we risk it, if it ever does expire. I've included a draft scope of work, draft schedule. Again, speaking very broad strokes, just thinking about like, how I want to pace out this update and what are the steps that are needed in order to update this plan. With the plan, with the framework that's there, with all of the work that all of you have done with public engagement, there seems to be a lot of good, valid data that I don't have in a centralized location, right? And it's also kind of scattershot and that that I need to go through, organize, and figure out what questions have been asked, how deeply have they been asked, and what questions haven't been asked to the community in order to ask those questions. I'm very apprehensive about asking the community questions that they've been asked three times already and only for the exercise of more planning. I think that would disillusion some community members. And I fear that some community members would come back to me and be like, why haven't you done anything yet? Because you've already asked me this question three times. So, so that's where, what I'm thinking of right now is thinking about how I want to approach community engagement going forward. And that's why I come to you with the scope of work and also the grant application to think about some assistance with the community engagement work. So, building off of the community engagement work, I know some of you might have questions about... Okay, so that's one component. What about actually changing the text? How are we going to change the text? And so, with that too, that's, there needs to be a lot of internal meetings that I need to have with city departments and with you, with boards and committees, going through all the goals and objectives that you made back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Going through which of these goals and objectives you've completed, which of them are still ongoing, which of them are still valid, which, and what goals and objectives would you like to do in the, in the long term? Along with the text changes. Even though there are, we have a good framework and good bones and using it as a strategic plan, you've used it very well to guide and orient all aspects with the city. But even within that too, a lot has changed since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So, that's some work that, that's some legwork that I need to do, is go through that text, see what's changed, strike through, edit, come back to you, come back to city staff, come back to boards and committees, and say, is this reflective of your value visions and your priorities? What needs to be changed? What needs to be added? What am I missing? And what would you like to be included based off of the changes in possibly your mindset, the changes in the direction that you'd like to go, that you'd like included in the long term? So, all of that will happen parallel with the community engagement aspect too, all going forward. Mostly looking into twenty twenty-six. Right now, I'm more focused on this, trying to get my approach right, trying to organize all of the data sources. Part of that, that data source organization aspect, I've already asked CCRPC to put together maps, to put together data to, to help with replacing a lot of the important data that we need to have in our municipal plan. And then based off of that, going forward with the text changes and working with all of you to come up with the revised long-term vision that you'd like. At this point, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
So I presented some questions last week, so thanks for providing some, a very quick response and a more detailed answer. That kind of helped lay some of my reservations. There definitely are aspects that I feel like texturally need to be updated, so I'm glad that it's not just kind of a rinse, repeat exercise. Thanks for the GAT chart and for the initial review by the CCRPC. Any additional visualized mapping that you can do where it's like, there are state requirements and how that's being met within the Comprehensive Plan would be valuable for me. Just for my own additional research.
Sure. I can...
So I, because in the CCRPC initial review, they did mention a couple different areas where there's legislative requirements for updates, so. I know I probably will dig into that as we move ahead, so having that mapped out a little bit more would be helpful for me.
Yeah. If it's helpful, I can send you some links to recent plans that CCRPC reviewed and approved at the back end of that. They usually have like a memo that says what they did and then a full checklist that goes through all of the statutory requirements and how it aligns. So that'll probably give you all the details that you need.
Thanks. And I'm also happy to hear for engagement-wise that you will be reaching out to the commissions. I know I said at least for now, on the infrastructure commission. And I know that we have a really very interested, very engaged group and they would welcome the opportunity to provide some additional feedback and review. Thank you.
One of the questions slash possible, I don't know if I'd call it a request, but thinking about how the questions that the council developed as part of our equity assessment worksheet can be included in like doing some of the outreach and how we're thinking about the plan in general, if some of that could even be like worked into the plan. That I think would be really wonderful, which it sounds like you're aligning that, so just, I was especially reminded because it's on our agenda again today. So yeah, and I think we came up with, with the help of the IMB Commission, some really good questions for specifically doing work like this, so. Hoping we can use it. I don't know if this is something that was responded to by, to Bryn, but I don't think I saw it, the thought of having like a specific inclusion and belonging section or like calling it out as part of like a general or all session, section.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take note of that, because that's not included in our current plan, because the IMB Commission came after the adoption, so yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, and I think some of the items that we have under all within like how we've been thinking about our city updates might fit under that. And it might be another good place to, because it's collecting work we have already done, like thinking about that as well. Let's see, I think those were most. One word that kind of came up in reading the CCRPC and thinking about both like the inclusion and belonging aspects and some of what Bryn brought up is this, like just environmental justice in general. And I don't know if like that's a term that we can really call out in this too, because it's, like, it sounds like we're already doing that work, so like labeling it and naming it. I really appreciate it. I think they had like even example of, the CCRPC had an example of something on the end of page three, beginning of page four, of like how you would frame a question like that. That reminded me of our equity assessment worksheet questions as well as like, oh yeah, I would really love to see how we're thinking about that in Winuski and naming it directly. Yeah, because I don't have any like specific questions, but yeah, those are kind of the thoughts that were coming up for me.
Okay, thank you.
Aurora, I noted in the RPC suggestions, it, like just here under the energy section, it says, "A commitment to an equity evaluation of actions should be added at the top of the action list." I know there's reference elsewhere in this document to the state legislature about environmental justice, et cetera. And I wonder if instead of having a separated inclusion and belonging section, there is like a piece of each of the subsections that connects to the equity inclusion and belonging piece.
Yeah, that might actually work really well because there are definitely overlaps across, like especially housing and safe, healthy, connected, but across all of them.
Yeah. I mean, that's something that we can definitely discuss going into the drafting phase. I mean, there are certain many aspects of that that's intersectional, right? That we would need to integrate into other components of the plan. And there's probably some objectives that you'd like to include independently too, that doesn't intersect with, that intersects with all of us, but doesn't intersect with the framework as a result.
Yeah.
I also think what you presented about targeted outreach to specific groups who haven't maybe been engaged before and, and also being targeted about what topics we're engaging on, I think that does align with this, like, the worksheet that we have developed. So, appreciate the, I just really appreciate the approach here, like, even just looking at the RPC memo, there are a lot of things that do need updated, but being strategic about how that time is spent and how we're asking people to, asking the community to be a part of it, so. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just one thing that hasn't come up yet, language access. What budget needs might be necessary. We get a lot of feedback that videos would be helpful, short tutorials. I don't know what that looks like or entails since we don't have a language access plan, but just something to consider as we talk about engagement and depth of engagement and, you know, it is planning documented, as you mentioned, so that I think is challenging for the general public, let alone English-language learners, perhaps, so. I think, and I'll defer to you on that, but want to just name it?
Okay.
Yeah, this is probably far future, but having like, like a simple language or video version might end up being helpful for the future, just thinking about access.
Let's keep this very robust priority in mind later this year.
Yes.
That will require many, many resources. Okay. Hearing no concerns, do I have a motion to approve this approach for the Comprehensive Plan Update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Aurora. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And that leads us into item B. On for discussion approval, the Municipal Planning Grant Application for this Comprehensive Plan Update.
Yeah. As mentioned, I'm looking for support for, through the Municipal Planning Grant Program to, for that strategic outreach work. I've penciled in ten grand to do this work. Nine thousand would be from the Municipal Planning Grant Program, a thousand from us. If we were to do it, I would rely on a consultant or more consultant to help with the approach and to, to facilitate some of that outreach. There's not a whole lot of capacity that I have, because I do a lot of different things, but it'd be, it'd be really, really helpful to get someone on board to help out with the, with the, with the, with the community outreach component. I've touched base with CCRPC about the numbers. It seems like for considering the small scale and how targeted that would want to be, ten thousand would do just fine.
Questions about, concerns?
Great. Do I have a motion to approve the Municipal Planning Grant Application for the twenty twenty-seven Comprehensive Plan Update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're getting into our post-Town Meeting Day housekeeping. So first up on for discussion approval is appointment of Deputy Mayor. And I would like to make a motion to have Counselor Renner continue on in the role.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry, I guess who's abstaining? Yeah.
Not, not in good form to vote on yourself. Thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have our City Council Rules of Procedure. So we follow Robert's Rules of Order, a simplified version included here, and then we have our... And then we have our specific rules of procedure that we have been adopting year to year. Um, staff recommended a change in section, where am I going? Oh boy, I think it's five.
Is there sure it changes?
Article five.
Oh yes, there it is, okay. So staff had recommended putting forth this addition in five E, that the mayor does not vote unless there's a tie vote or to achieve quorum with the vote. That is precedent that I've been following from before me, which we could codify. However, you will find in section three E, or article three E, excuse me. The mayor or presiding chair may make motions and may vote on all questions before the body. So.
Contradicts each other.
They're, they're contradictory, we, we could keep article three E as it is. Um, and probably just still continue operating in the fashion where the mayor serves for quorum and tiebreaker. To the point of staff, it's like reinforcing the facilitatory role.
Hmm.
Or we could, uh, strike that language in three E and actually codify that the mayor is only voting during tiebreaks and quorum.
I mean, you just made a motion, so you probably wanna keep that.
I did, I did just make one here.
We probably wanna keep that. So we're not giving that up.
Yeah, that's interesting. I think a lot of residents don't realize that you don't vote.
Uh, they do not.
Cause many a time people have asked me to try to talk to you about your votes, so. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't realize it until I think it was a year or two in, I corrected him and I was like, oh, no, no, it was five to zero, and she was like. Actually, it wasn't, I was like, oh, gosh, I didn't even notice.
How do you feel about it, I guess? Given your ten tenure?
Uh, based on what just happened, I do kind of wanna keep the right of the chair to vote in place. And maybe for five E, um, we would reword this, that the mayor does not typically vote. Just to reflect the practice that we generally have.
Or is not required to vote?
Oh yes, the mayor is not required to vote, let's make that edit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That works. So that whoever's presiding has the opportunity to state their opinion on a motion?
Um.
Yeah.
There is an additional thing in here that we don't always follow, um.
Robert would not be happy.
Hold on, I took notes.
Leave this Robert to anyone.
Okay, article three F. It says a member may speak or make a motion only after being recognized by the mayor or presiding chair. And we do generally follow that, but we also, sometimes there is back and forth discussion without official formal recognition. Which I am comfortable with, um, and just wanted to check in with everyone. Or if we should be adhering more closely to this.
I think it's, I don't know, look to Elaine a little bit maybe, but I think it's good to leave in there. This council, I feel we all have good relationships with each other, but I can envision there could be a future where maybe councils are screaming at each other and. The mayor would need to recognize to stop that type of thing from happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's luck for us, so I think it's fine to keep it.
So I don't know if we can, sorry, I was, I was looking to you, cause I don't know if we can keep something in here, but ignore it in a way.
Well, I, my feeling is like Robert's rules are really not friendly to, uh, healthy, normal, human, social interaction discussions.
Yeah.
Which you all are good at, so to me, the, the flex here is how you define recognized. So, uh, I mean, after is, I guess, more, less ambiguous, but if you make a motion and say Christine decides to say, well, yeah, that, that's okay. Like if she lets it pass, you can consider that as being recognized.
Could I always say council can speak unless they're told they cannot?
Something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's always up to the, you know, the chair of the meeting to say, well, you're out of order and stop that.
I think often eye contacts and head nods are used as well, which is fine up here.
We give each other ample time to weigh in.
Yeah.
And double check if there's anything else, which I think in terms of the pers- the process we've been following the last three or four years works, yeah.
Okay. Um, one last thing I wanna just highlight, not for a decision point. But there is language in here in article seven about constituent relations. That the city manager is responsible for allocating resources, assuring services are provided, and staff management. Communication about these should be directed to the manager. I think that's something that we all could get more consistent about in constituent relations. If it really is an operations issue, directing folks to Elaine and not trying to be the intermediary to help reinforce. For the community, whose role is whose, and similarly with the press, right? If they're asking about operations issues, deferring to the manager.
Yeah.
Um. I personally in, have seen these many years in a row, but it was, it was frankly helpful to read through them again and refresh myself on.
Yeah.
Things that sort of fall off throughout the course of business. Okay. So, could I have a motion to approve the city council rules of procedure? With a change to article five E to say the mayor is not required to vote unless tiebreaker called?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Bryn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the statewide code of ethics and city council conflict of interest policy.
All right, I'm gonna say a whole bunch of words now.
Yeah.
Um, so act one seventy one became state law on June tenth, twenty twenty four. It removes municipal authority to enact conflict of interest prohibitions and replaces that authority with a new statewide municipal code of ethics. It does not prohibit municipalities from adopting more restrictive ethics policies. Some aspects of city council's historical conflict of interest policy are more restrictive than the new statewide code and some are less. Uh, notably among the most stricter provision provisions for state, from the statewide code. Uh, include that the, that specific offices, including council, need to take a state approved training. Provided the link to that training to council, there is no enforcement mechanism should a member of council or any other elected official described in act one seventy one. Uh, decide not to take the training. Uh, one idea is for council to set up your own accountability by deciding on a date to take the training by and then provide the documentation proving that. You could do that, uh, with me, just for the sake of keeping it in one place. Act one seventy one also requires municipalities adopt a code of ethics ordinance. Winuski does not have such an ordinance, although it does have policies that apply to council, of course, um, which is the conflict of interest policy. And staff, which are in the personal manual and in financial policies and procedures. I've, since Friday, um, after I, we sent the packet out, I reviewed the Vermont League of Cities and Towns model ordinance. And it is actually pretty straightforward, it pretty much echoes the, the act, which is itself pretty plain language. Um, there are some items that we should get the city attorney to take on and an overall review to see how historical conflict of interest policy might be. Stronger and council may want to incorporate into the ordinance or keep separate in a policy. So in my cover sheet for that, the second item I sent on Friday, I had indicated that I plan to combine the historical council conflict of interest policy and the statewide code of ethics. However, now that I've had a chance to review the Vermont League of Cities and Towns model. I feel it's possible that council will consider that redundant and also not terrible user friendly to have two places for council to look. So, uh, my updated recommendation is to wait until staff and the city attorney return with a proposed ordinance before deciding on whether to adopt a separate policy. In the meantime, though, because there are, there's varying severity in the two, um, I recommend council do a little bit of a messy thing, but. Provide a clear, uh, direction by readopting the historical Winuski conflict of interest policy, except the reference to repealed state statute. And the statutory municipal code of ethics with the more restrictive provisions prevailing where they disagree or one is silent. This would provide clarity while staff work on, uh, work on the ordinance and then potentially a unified, uh, code. So to wrap up, I'm looking for three actions from council, they're in the cover sheet under recommended actions. Uh, uh, the first one is a little bit modified, so direction on whether to bring both a revised policy and ordinance to council or just the ordinance first. Adopt the statutory municipal code of ethics and the Winuski city council conflict of interest proposed policy. With the more restrictive provisions prevailing where they disagree or one is silent. And to set a deadline for council members to take the training and provide documentation to the city manager.
Thank you. Uh, to your first question. I think what you're proposing is potentially to just bring us one thing that meets these needs.
Correct.
And in the interim, we operate under the more restrictive of both. For however long it takes to draft the unified thing. I'm okay with that approach, how do others feel?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah.
Um, for a deadline for council members to take training, I, the state deadline was September thirty, right?
Yes, for, for existing officers, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we could, just to commit to meeting that deadline, the state statute deadline.
Exactly.
Um, so I can take two votes here unless there's other questions, anyone needs any clarification? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the statutory municipal code of ethics and the Winuski city council conflict of interest policy? With the more restrictive provisions prevailing where they disagree or one is silent?
So moved, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And may have a motion for council to commit to the deadline of completing state mandated training and providing documentation to the city manager by September thirty, twenty twenty five.
So moved, second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Bryn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and. Thank you in advance for crosswalking those new requirements with what we are doing already. All right. So next up, we have our draft meeting schedule, which is.
Excuse me.
Pretty standard approach. Uh, open to questions or concerns about any of these dates before we talk about priority and strategy. Schedule look good?
Yeah.
All right.
Thomas, I keep thinking about your point, it's like, don't have a meeting right after a presidential election. It's like, am I gonna remember when we actually have a presidential election?
No, we won't, we'll have the same conversation behind.
Okay, so we are looking to set a date for strategies and priorities in June. It's typically been a Saturday, folks are okay with that, we can look at those.
Mm-hmm.
I have a preference for later in the month.
Okay.
I'm hoping to be away the. Seventh and eighth, and then getting back fourteen, fifteen, so the twenty first, twenty second, twenty eighth or twenty ninth would be my preference.
Those work for me.
Me too.
If we could get a range till I can pull a leadership team, that would be great, yeah.
If I'm not available for a team.
I will, the, there's likely to be, I'd imagine, a Juneteenth event maybe on the twenty first. Um, which I'm sure many folks will attend. So just to throw that out there too.
I can do the twentieth.
Looks like it's the twentieth.
So.
Five to nine.
It'll be the twentieth.
Okay.
Okay, twenty first would be preferred if it's, if there aren't conflicts with other community events. So we're all saying June twenty one?
Saturday, Saturday the twenty first?
Yeah.
I may have a work interference that weekend.
Okay.
I, that's the short answer, so.
Yeah.
Um.
We.
What about the twentieth?
But any other weekend in June works well.
So one thing we, check my memory. One thing we had to discuss was maybe just during a regular, like, Monday evening.
Or any weekday.
Yeah, a week, a weeknight, yeah.
Weeknight.
Um, yeah, how does staff feel about that?
Actually, I think that was their preference.
Hmm.
Okay. So last two weeks of June?
Again, if you do a range, um, that would.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd rather have more members of staff be available. And if that means we have to do a weekday, I'd rather do that.
I could do any day, the last two weeks of June, that there isn't a council or commission meeting.
Right.
Yeah. Right now, it looks relatively open for me.
Same.
I just realized I'm gonna be, uh, away for much of, for the first half of June, so that's kind of out.
But the sixteenth through the twenty seventh, you're here?
Uh, I'll be back on, well. I still need to discuss with Christine, but I will definitely be here, uh, after the twenty second. Or after the twenty first, so twenty second onwards.
So somewhere with the twenty first through twenty seven, maybe the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, my June is open except for those two days, I've got it, and it went over that weekend, but besides that, totally open at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm happy to stay flexible to everyone else who needs aside from that weekend.
So let's go with twenty third through thirtieth and see what works for staff.
And it, I'm fine if doing the thirtieth works best for Elaine after being away.
Yeah.
Uh, would the eighteenth also be a possibility I can use for polling?
I believe I'm available.
The eighteen?
Yeah.
I should be.
Yep.
All right, so we said eighteenth or twenty third onward?
Yeah. Don't accept any appointments, folks.
Do we wanna do twenty first onward, or do we wanna do twenty first onward or make sure that, or twenty second onward, or skip the twenty second because of Charlie?
Uh, skip the twenty second.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay. So we will come back to confirm that, but otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Thomas, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto G, I have included for readoption, the declaration of inclusion. Um, just to recommit ourselves in the city, seems particularly important now, more so than ever. Um, in fact, the foul, all of these items, the equity assessment worksheet, item H, item I, the community access procedure. Um, I, I have placed all of, on these on here basically just for readoption, so we can recommit to using them in service of equity.
That's great.
Any questions about any of them?
No.
No.
Could I get a motion to approve items GHI?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And then finally, we have council liaison appointments. Um, I will apologize if you saw this early, you may have seen the wrong person listed for engagement liaison, that was corrected. Uh, anyone trying to change any of their liaison roles?
Um, I would like the engagement liaison back.
I am, I would love to.
All right, there you go.
I was gonna be like, I don't.
I was, I was worried there.
I should've got you in with my typo.
You could've come in with a typo, you wouldn't have had to change anything.
Okay.
Are you still good with I, uh, um, safety health be connected?
You know, I wa- so I am, cause I feel like they've gone through such change since I started, that we haven't really done anything.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see some stuff getting done while I'm the liaison for a little bit. Um, but if you are wanting it back, I'm happy to, okay.
I want to offer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Everyone else good with their current, are you doing all right with finance?
Hmm.
Yeah, it's fine. Um, I could be talked into handing it off, though, if it was designed.
Just wondering about your levels of desperation.
All right, um.
You're still thoughtful, you're a child.
Yeah. The, the other thing that I wanna call out is at the end of the document, we have the partner organizations and roles.
Yep.
And we don't have to dig into this right now, but it occurs to me that we have a number of. these roles that we appoint community members to, who don't have a direct connection with council. And so it might be strategic for us to kind of divvy up periodic outreach to these individuals.
I totally agree. Greenmount Transit dibs.
Oh, great. We can work for this right now, yeah. All right. Uh, we've got.
And for partnership for prevention, there's currently, um, somebody who works there is on state wealthy connected.
Oh, that's great.
So there's that connection as well.
Um.
I can do town meeting TV.
Oh, great. I've been talking to Connor about the airport, I could keep that one.
Okay.
I'll do WVP.
All right. I think that we're, oh, it works out so perfect, y'all. It's the right number. Yeah, so I'm just thinking, like, every two, three months, reaching out to see what's going on.
Yeah.
Awesome, sounds good. Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve city council liaison appointments for commissions with the one change for Thomas to serve as engagement liaison?
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And because we already took care of eight and nine, we are at the end of tonight's agenda, and I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Aurora, second by Thomas, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Leading adjourned.
I know.